We had our party council meeting at this time. We're going to ask Chaplain Roy Gould from the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy to come lead us in prayer, and Devery Dotoma, Deputy Public Works Director, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, I thank you tonight for each council member, and I think deliberate on each item before them. We pray for them for wisdom, for strength, for courage, and for God, that your people may be blessed, and that you may receive the glory. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation on none above, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item number two, minutes of the October.
Full approval.
Probably moved in seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The ayes have it. Item three, third readings. Three A, amend the Charleston County, Charleston Colleton County Multi-County Industrial Park for parcels located in the redevelopment project area to add new properties.
An ordinance to further amend the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park for properties located in a redevelopment project area buying between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a multi-county industrial business park so as to include additional properties in Charleston County as part of the multi-county industrial park. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion, I mean, I'm sorry, the ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Three B, amend the Charleston Colleton Multi-County Industrial Park to add new parcels.
An ordinance to further amend the agreement for development of a joint county industrial park buying between Charleston County, South Carolina, and Colleton County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park so as to include additional property in Charleston County as part of the joint county industrial park, and to update the status of certain property in Charleston County with respect to the joint county industrial park. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
E Z R E Z zero seven two five zero zero one six six, Latson Road rezoning.
An ordinance rezoning the real property located at thirty-two seventy-two Latson Road, parcel identification number three-nine-zero-zero-zero-four-three-eight, from the industrial I N zoning district to the community commercial C C zoning district. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes third reading with nine ayes.
Second reading. We're going to take these individually for a pedestrian and temporary construction easement forty-three fifty-five Bridgeview Drive.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of an easement and a temporary construction easement to movement resources on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number four-one-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-two-seven, located at forty-three fifty-five Bridgeview Drive, North Charleston, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Certainly some discussion on four B and four C based on what we heard in public comments. We're going to read the ordinance, but certainly taking into consideration the major subdivision amendment requests from the community if that was ever contemplated. I don't see Ms., oh, there you are. I'm looking like over there. No more than two acres. I can't read my own notes. And then the S three sort of considerations, the pervious versus impervious surface considerations, the growth amendments for, okay, so we have a whole statement here. Minimum lot width considerations, ten-mile historic preservation committee would like percentages closer to historic characteristic of the community, looking at staff recommendation versus with the community, contemplated maximum building coverage, pervious surface coverage or zoned area, lots per acres that were probably the will of the community versus what ended up being staff recommendation, minimum lot widths, again, maximum coverages, building coverages impervious versus impervious surfaces. Just wanting to make certain that we have a discussion of this when the time comes. Four B, ten-mile overlay zoning district, we're going to have a discussion as soon as we can get the amendment read.
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan as amended at the following document locations, map three-point-one-point-four, future land use, map three-point-one-point-five, urban suburban, future land use detail, and map three-point-one-point-eighteen, ten-mile community overlay zoning district.
All right, Mr. Kabrowski.
I'd like to, can I make an amendment to that to reduce the impervious surface from twenty-five percent to twenty?
I think that may be in four C.
Well, no, four C is the zoning upgrade, I believe, if I'm correct. And I respectfully ask for clarification if I'm wrong. This has to do with the overlay, four B, which I listened carefully to the arguments from Ten Mile, and I'd like to amend it to reduce impervious surface from twenty-five percent to twenty percent and reduce the maximum, the space from the twenty percent to twenty-five for the building, along the other matters that they brought forward.
So again, there's a list, a litany of these things, and I would hate to try to muddy that even in a condensed amendment, because I mean, there are bulleted items, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, that probably can't literally be kind of summed up. I really think, have we worked with the community on these?
Yes, sir. All of the ones except for the first one that was mentioned, the pacing, we have not seen those amendments. We heard them talked about by the, some of the speakers at the public hearing, but were never given a copy, and I don't think council ever saw those either. The other items, the more dimensional standards, we did go over with the community, and in that last meeting, what you see in that overlay district was the consensus of the folks that were at the very last community meeting we held with them.
I did suggest to the community that they send this language to our attorney to make certain that it is something legally that does align with what's being presented, and I know we have up to third reading in order to make these changes, but some of these are significant, that I think that it may, you know, change the composition or constitution of the overlay itself, and so I really think it requires a careful look.
Yes, sir. I've received those amendments via email while we were sitting here this evening. I've not had a chance to meet with staff and have any discussion with regards to them, but I'm happy to do that.
Are we in a rush in order to, I mean, is there a timeline that, I know we're on second reading now?
You got to start the roll again. If you pause, I'll be on a time limit, you had to have this done with a certain amount of time?
No, sir. We could, we could hold second, and we could pause second or third and third reading until y'all want to bring it back.
The problem I got, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The problem I have with this is staff has met with these people on several occasions. The folks who came out put out what they wanted. It was a vote. I mean, if you weren't there to take the vote, it's no problem, it's no problem with staff or this body. You know, silent is consent. If you weren't there to voice your concern, then those folks who took the time that came out, they, you know, they did what they had to do in to move forward. There's no perfect plan, okay? And we can't let perfect overtake good. And so, no matter how you slice this pie, somebody's not going to be happy. But, you know, council has already instructed our staff to go out there, they have made a decision, so I think it's time to move on. Everybody's not going to be happy. Now, you know, these folks that want to go, you know, one, you know, everyone, that's something that if you got three children in your house, you only got three acres of land, you want to subdivision, give each one of them an acre to build their home, they can do it. Under the current one-point-three, you will only be able to build one house. So which one of your child you going to favor over the other? And so this is something that's going to ensure that these families actually stay in the community, one to one. But that's, and me looking at it, but, you know, I think to send this back and keep going all over again, when you send it back, it's still not going to be satisfactory. Mr. Tisdale, I'm, you know, waiting for some results because they're ready to move on, and to hold them up again, I think would be, you know, disingenuous, and I think this, if we move this forward to where it could be amended at times, I think that will help the community as well when everybody gets together, and this council as well too. But I'm not willing to hold this up, you know, and send staff back out, and it's going to have the same results.
Mr. Warman?
Port order, please, sir.
Yes.
If you'll mind, port order. Mr. Kabrowski made an motion to amend this. I think that needs a second for discussion. If there's no second.
I withdraw that. I withdraw the amendment, and my amendment would be to postpone this decision till we can meet with the staff and have these issues addressed.
It needs a second to continue discussing. Whichever amendment he's making, it needs a second to continue discussing.
It was seconded by Mr. Darby, and I simply wanted to point out the fact that it was a more multi-layered amendment than what was being at least put on the table at the time, because there's a lot of different components in here that would substantially, could substantially change the overlay. Mr. Warman?
Well, there is a lot going on here, and I'll try not to be too scattered, although I want to touch on a few things. I mean, first, and I'll just tell you, Mr. Kabrowski, I'm fine to vote to a delay at least of one meeting. The urgency that I, maybe it's not urgency, but the time pressure that I see is that, you know, we've dealt with some HPC appeals, we've dealt with some various development pressures. I think we sort of have all hopefully agreed that this is really, needs to be sort of the centerpiece of how those development pressures are addressed, rather than maybe trying to, you know, do it. I mean, the HPC can supplement that, but certainly I think this should be the main way to regulate it. So I don't mean to say that we need to vote on it tonight. I'll happily vote with you on this motion that's currently on the floor, but I do think we don't want to let it hang, you know, we don't want to let it go too long because that just gives developers more time to come up with something. That being said, yeah, I do think that ultimately, you know, the idea of this, and maybe another reason not to let it go on too long, is we can amend it. So to the extent some of this might have been stuff that just wasn't picked up in the process in time to get included, I'm happy to revisit it. To the extent some of it is folks thinking that maybe the process didn't capture what the actual majority of the community felt, you know, to Mr. Pryor's point, I would say the public process is still going on. So if we can get some numbers and folks can show us that, you know, maybe we weren't able to reach as many folks as we thought we were able to, I'm happy to revisit that. I do want to commend our staff on the very robust public process that went into this, though. So, you know, my inclination is to go with what that public process sort of led to, but, you know, like I said, I mean, there's three reading for a reason, and so I'm happy to give a little bit more time, although again, I do want to stress that we really don't want this to, frankly, we don't want this to stretch out as much as the HPC thing or the HPC ordinance did two years ago or whenever that was. I think that went on for months and ultimately sort of left us without much of anything when we could have been improving that earlier, so that's all I'll say.
Mr. Sass?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andrea, if I'm correct, y'all had meetings with groups, and they made suggestions, and then y'all went to work on those, and you put that together, and so now we have more people coming back with different suggestions, with some different suggestions. Can we get maybe some sort of a chart that shows what suggestions are, how they compare with each other? But I guess one of the things that really concerns me is something I heard somebody mention today, and I'd heard it mentioned off a little bit, something about timing, and something about only so many lots could be built out in a year. I think there's about three hundred lots out there in Ten Mile, and so if you say only five lots could be built a year, that's really severely handicapping a whole lot of, it could be severely handicapping a lot of people. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not saying I want a developer to come out there and do twenty lots. What I'm saying, though, is if you've got three hundred lots out there, that's a number of families that might be wanting to have a family member move in next door or something like that. I'm worried about this timing thing I don't know anything about.
Pacing.
And so pacing, I'd like to know more about it.
And staff has not seen that proposal, so we would have to get that from the community to evaluate it.
Oh, okay, y'all have seen it. Okay. Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Middleton. Mr. Pryor, great comments. I agree with your comments. I think this needs to move forward, and I think Mr. Warman said too, we've got three readings for a reason, but I agree, that pacing thing bothers me. It seems like a control feature, which I don't, which I don't like, and that gentleman that said, you know, he's a bin here, I like that. You know, he, this, you know, some of these suggestions cost he and his family a lot of money. It just seems like things that are trying to control other people's property, and I've got, I've got a problem with that. I think our staff has done a fantastic job. I'm ready to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Middleton.
Kabrowski?
I just want to clarify, because what we do would be irreversible for the rest of time about people who, generations, as I've said, for generations of blood, sweat, and tear, and I just want to confirm with the staff, because I think it's important. My understanding was at the last meeting, that the majority was, it was between ten or fifteen people by raising their hands and voted a majority of two, which according to my math, would mean as little as six people and as little, and as most, as nine people to make the thing that you're saying the majority. And there are more people, I just wish the people that stand, that wanted these amendments to stand, I believe there's more people here tonight than what that vote was. Am I correct? So anybody who's here from Ten Mile, just please stand if you are in favor of these changes that you presented. So we have twice as many people here showing up at a meeting, coming a long distance and getting home late at night, because I've been through there a million times, they won't get home for another hour at least after the speeding ends, maybe longer because of traffic, an hour and a half. And twice as many people, maybe three times, are here tonight, as you said, in the majority vote was. And what we do, I have thirty more miles of my district from there to the Georgetown line, and if we, what we do today will stand for, will be an example, and we can't say no to increasing density or things otherwise, and our goal is to get this right. If this many people came out, again, twice as many people, as you said, made that decision, we should at least pause and listen to them, and if we, you know, might as well go into four C now, too. If we upzone, we're not downzoning by this proposal and taking property rights away from people or upzoning. And this again, as I said all the time, for anybody who's driven out Highway seventeen, this is immediately after Park West and Dunes West and Carolina Park. It's just, all the development will overwhelm them. If we increase that density ten or fifteen years from now of one hundred eighty acres, as I understand, would be affected by this upzoning, three hundred sixty new homes, it won't exist as Ten Mile anymore. So I just asked us to pause, and that many people came out, twice as many, as you said, made the decision, that we at least pause and hear this out before we proceed, because what we do will echo for generations. Thank you.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
And to Mr. Kabrowski's point, I do not think that we need to defer this if there is an amendment on the table that we need to take up. We do have some time pressures in the sense that folks want some finality to what we're going to decide. One of those groups of folks, I spoke with Mr. Chapman, who serves on the town council of Mount Pleasant. He indicated that their town council is waiting to see what we are going to do, particularly with the property on the other side of seventeen, because they intend to match whatever zoning we implement. And that could have, as Mr. Kabrowski has said before, very expansive impacts to the extent we create an upzone in that area. So if the community is here saying that they, they don't necessarily want that upzoning, I think we need to go ahead and move forward, at least get this to third reading so that, so we can be consistent among both the county and our municipal colleagues. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Warman?
Maybe just to clarify, I mean, so there were a lot of amendments that were put on the table. I do, I mean, I can count. I can see more folks particularly, I mean, if I'm understanding that the folks here are against going from one and three acres to one and one acres, I mean, that's something that was thoroughly discussed. And so if we've got, you know, sort of a majority now, I mean, at least a majority compared to the folks who voted on it at the final time, I just wouldn't want to necessarily take on all of the amendments that Mr. Kabrowski was talking about, but I mean, if, I'm familiar with that issue, I think everyone up here should be. I'm happy to vote that way and keep this moving forward, and if there's other stuff we can take up, I think, you know, we will have another reading to do that. I'm going to basically just end this by saying, Mr. Kabrowski, I'm going to follow your lead on this one, whether you think the time is necessary or not, but I do think there are some, some good reasons to keep this moving.
Thank you.
Mr. Boykin?
Chair, I'll draw a comparison in the ag preservation district outside the urban growth boundary, along the edges of that boundary and in areas that were deemed to be settlement areas, the zoning is AGR, which is one dwelling unit per acre. So this would not be wholly inconsistent with what's already going on in other parts of the county.
All right, so the motion that's on the table is to defer, and so we'll deal with that first.
Is it to defer four B and four C?
No, we're only dealing with four B.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Nay.
All right, so let's go to.
We can do a roll call vote on that?
I was going to say, can I get the nays? I know it was the majority. The nays are Moody, Boykin.
I mean, I was. I'm sorry. Okay.
Are you a nay, Mr. Darby?
No.
You're not. Aye, aye.
Nay, Honeycutt.
So this was the motion to defer.
Nay, Pryor.
Okay.
Nay, Sass. Okay.
All right.
Mr. Count. Score.
So I've got Moody, Boykin, Honeycutt, Pryor, Sass as nay, and you're a nay as well, and Middleton is nay. And everyone else is aye. Yes, sir.
All right, and so let's, did we have the reading of the ordinance?
I did read the ordinance, yes, sir.
All right, so we'll go with the roll call vote to move this through a second reading, knowing that the attorney is going to read through all of these amendments, get with staff, by third reading, get with the community.
Right.
So this is not dead as it relates to the community's desire based on these things that were sent in, but we do need the legal, you know, interpretation as to whether these things can happen, and then some coordination with staff by third reading if indeed any of this makes sense to do.
Okay, Mr. Boykin?
Sorry, this is for second reading. Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with seven ayes and two nays.
Four C, ten-mile overlay zoning district, ZLDR amendments.
An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ordinance number twelve oh two, as amended at the following document locations, chapter five overlay and special purpose zoning districts and chapter twelve definitions.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Again, not to belabor, but we had this discussion, and we showed that at least twice, maybe three times as many people are here tonight to travel from, you know, Ten Mile to say no to this, they don't want the upzoning, from what you said they voted on, so I would ask, respect the will of the people not to upzone this, understand the precedent that this would set for all of East Cooper, and would ask you to look at what happened on Highway seventeen south with the traffic there. This is a chance for us to be proactive and not let the continued, our traffic to be worse. We're about to ask for a sales tax referendum. Here's an opportunity to take care of and prevent traffic from increasing. We already have a nightmare of traffic in northern Mount Pleasant. This would be, this expanding it to north of that, and also, as we heard from Ms. Honeycutt in the town of Mount Pleasant, they're looking at what we are going to do. If we just allow this, they're going to zone it in at this upzoning, and that upzoning will be continuously going north all the way to McLeanville. So it won't be, this will be three hundred sixty homes. You'll have eventually thousands of new homes all the way from, they'll fill in every square inch of my district that they can, like they've done to some other districts going south. This is a chance to say no to that and market, well, if you say yes to this, you're seeing yes to the continuation, the urbanization of East Cooper and increasing our traffic nightmares.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Mr. Chairman, I would, to the extent we don't have the motion amended on the floor, would move to amend that we keep the zoning on the other side of seventeen that we've discussed at the one per acre.
And I second that.
And seconded.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was.
This is the S, the S changing the zoning, on the other side of seventeen, to keep it what it is as opposed to the increase. That's one of the things the community wants, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you mean keep it as it is, as in it would be one per three acres. The change was one per.
There is no upzoning.
Right. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, so let's deal with that amendment first before we go back to the actual, probably moved in second, Mr. Kabrowski seconded it.
Mr. Kabrowski.
All right, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? Okay, so we go to the roll call vote of the actual zoning, the ZLDR amendments with the amendment that just passed.
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending the Charleston County Zoning and Land Development Regulations, or, oh, I've already, sorry, I've already read this, but this includes the amendment. Okay, Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
All right, we have first readings, item five.
Yes, sir.
Five A, repeal and replace business.
City recommendations, items A and B, Mr. Chairman.
We moved and seconded A and B. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay? The ayes have it. Item seven.
Approved, approved, and moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? The ayes have it. Mr. Warman?
Nothing, nothing much at least.
All right, item consent agenda?
Prove six A through D.
Second, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? The ayes have it. Item seven.
Through E.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? The ayes have it. Mr. Warman?
Nothing, nothing much, at least. I think we got through some stuff. I think, thank you, Ms. Honeycutt, for seeing, seeing something where we could move that forward. I do think, again, you're correct in that, you know, we do need to get something on the books here in terms of this overlay. To the extent that, again, we've got another reading, but to the extent that there's stuff that's not captured in the third reading, we can keep tinkering with it, but I think it would be a good first step to certainly get something on the books. So happy to see that moving forward. I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Boykin? None for me, sir. Mr. Sass?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Darby?
Congratulations to Ms. Mary Hannah Studamire from North Charleston High School, who became the Assistant Principal of the Year in the state of South Carolina. This award has not been worn by Charleston County School District officials since two thousand and three. And yet, one of his assistant principals for North Charleston made that great heave, and we are so very proud of her in the hundredth celebrating year of North Charleston High School. Congratulations to Ms. Mary Hannah Studamire.
Congratulations. Ms. Honeycutt?
I just wanted to say thank you to the ten-mile community for showing up, for engaging in this process. This is very self-determined, and we want you to know that we hear what you're saying. We want to move this forward for your benefit. And so thank you for being here tonight and traveling all this way, and we will continue to look at these items and respond. Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
Nothing tonight, sir. Just a happy Thanksgiving. I want to wish my youngest son a happy eighteenth birthday today.
All right, happy birthday to your son.
I was a young man when I got here.
Mr. Pryor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo what Ms. Honeycutt said to the community from the ten-mile area. We have been working with them for many, many years, and we continue to work with them. But we want this to be successful, because this would be the template on what, you know, merits Charleston County and the unincorporated area, and especially any settlement areas. To our staff, thank you so much for what y'all have been doing. And we wish that you, you know, enjoy your holiday, your three-day, four-day weekend, and don't answer Mr. Tooten's phone call after Wednesday, okay? And if he says anything, call me.
Well, then you don't call me after.
I won't. Don't answer his phone call after y'all leave there on Wednesday, okay? And Mr. Tooten, I hope you will let them leave by two o'clock on Wednesday.
It happens, sir.
Madam, Madam Attorney? Mr. Administrator?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Mr. Vice Chair, I do apologize.
I just wanted to sincerely thank Councilman Honeycutt for her leadership and insight is to this, and the result of her amendment and insight that she helps preserve ten-mile as it is for future generations living East Cooper. I can't thank you enough for this. Thank you. And also want to acknowledge, it's a year ago, my mother passed away, so time goes by quick. But in terms of the ten-mile, we honor those who come before us for all the sacrifices they have made and made us who we are. And I hope that we, a little bit, have honored you by your coming, your efforts, and all the hard work and generations that went before you, and you fighting to protect, preserve what you have, and to keep the memory of your ancestors. So thank you for all you've done, and for your coming, honoring those who came before you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We had a very successful resilience and sustainability symposium on